One time and something to stop it.
Two people can just get the lift started and then you can, so what we're on doing.
He was up.
Okay, and then we're just.
Then you're gonna race all around.
We're gonna do two sides, two sides. So we're gonna do it like a triangle.
Hey Rob, can you pull that line, can you get that line out? Oh, never mind, you can't, never mind.
The cord is in the Y.
That's alright, that's alright, do that and then.
I got it down, bud, so.
It's easy, like, like, slow runs down, slow ball runs down, so.
I tell you what. I kept a car waiting, I'm going forward.
Can you take those papers off?
It had a point one. That was it. So they have the super storm sand. And then the people never use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The generator?
Yeah, it's a sixty-eight car. And um, we got a hundred bucks. But we use it for.
He seen him amazing, John, where you get this generator from? I said, oh, nah, and he said, you gotta get that. I said, oh, nah, that's Rambo.
I'm trying to mess up a generator.
I'm about to say, you got a nice thing back there. I said, yeah, that's Rambo. That ain't mine. He said, it's okay. He said, how you got it?
He's like, I still work site after Sandy.
What's what this is from? If they're saying you, the people have power for two or three weeks. So they're able to follow this generator. And so they couldn't be acquired. And it's after years. I want to hand, I head her up back and forth. You know, it's probably carburetor or maybe. And she says. Like, I'll have to let you couple of days there, she a little assumption. Like it a little bit easier than I. Okay, here's this girl. I lifted it up and I got just the edge of it.
That's how you, that's how you mess up your back.
And they got a jack rack box that just ran through the box and then we. And out of the box.
Sometimes you just come. I was driving, I can't remember where I was driving. And I think my yardstick. And stuff where they cut the neck track. I was planning to be an X T two. It goes for eighteen, always about nineteen hundred. So I, I just thought, so you're selling that? He says, well, yeah, so.
So mine that sounds like five things. I got five best practice check with their people. That's the. Alright, did you know when he hands?
The winter before, I get the fall. And then the sky.
Let me get an invitation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I mean.
I know, but I'm trying to read that. I was trying to get the stamp. I wanted that stamp. Well, I was on the last one. I was on the last.
That's good stuff.
After eight.
A little red.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Borough Council meeting. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, D. D. P. L. nineteen seventy-five. Notice of this meeting was posted on the Borough Municipal Bulletin Board designed for that purpose. Notice was also posted on the Borough of Penns Grove website at W W W dot Penns Grove dash N J dot org. And was emailed to the official newspaper as provided by resolution. Additionally, in response to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen. This December seventh, two thousand twenty-one meeting is also held in, is held in the courtroom of Borough Hall. At One State Street, Penns Grove, New Jersey, with no more than thirty-two persons present. And also via Zoom online meeting platform. Can everyone stand, please, to do a question? Put your right hand on your heart. Then again. I am a witness to the prayer of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Please do the invocation. Almighty Father, as we stand before you this evening, we ask for your guidance and wisdom in all matters which come before this suffering body. That we always be aware of the needs of the people of this community. Grant us with the patience and the understanding to lead and direct others in the very best manner possible. We ask you all in your name, amen. You may now proceed. Alright. Councilman Carter?
Here.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Council President Minty?
Here.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the minutes for July sixth, two thousand twenty-one regular session. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Council President. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All affirmed, motion canceled. Next, set of reading minutes for July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one regular session. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council President. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes. Thank you. And the next set of reading minutes is November ninth, two thousand twenty-one special session. May I have a motion to adopt? Thank you, Council President. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Jordana. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the payment of bills and approval of bill list. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Council President. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of resolutions for consideration by consent. First resolution is two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-one. That is a resolution establishing a fair and open process for the award of the professional service contracts with the Borough of Penns Grove for calendar year two thousand twenty-two. The next resolution is two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-two. That's a resolution authorizing the Borough of Penns Grove to enter into a shared service agreement with the Township of Kearns Point for municipal tax collection. Next resolution is two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-three. That is a resolution authorizing the Borough of Penns Grove to enter into a shared service agreement with the Township of Kearns Point for municipal public works services. Next resolution is two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-four. That is a resolution establishing a fair and open process for the award of the demolition contract with the Borough of Penns Grove for calendar year two thousand twenty-two. Next resolution, two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-five. That is a resolution authorizing change order number one for Liberty Fire Station Parking Lot Reconstruction. Next resolution is two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-six. That is a resolution authorizing partial payment for the Liberty Fire Station Parking Lot Reconstruction. And last, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-seven. That is a resolution providing for additional compensation to the municipal clerk. May I have a motion to adopt resolution?
Can we do a point of order here? Can we break up first one? And do that separately?
Two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-one. That's short. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-two through two thousand twenty-one dash twelve dash one thirty-seven? May I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call?
I need a question in here.
Yes.
Two thousand. You know, one thirty-three. Resolution for twenty-six point of the work services. Did we get a copy of that?
Yeah, maybe. Ma'am.
Sure.
The attorney for Kearns Point had to make a change to the last portion of that. The resolution is simply a resolution authorizing mayor to do that. I will make sure that prior to it being authorized. Every council member has a copy of that particular contract. I should receive that from him by tomorrow morning.
So what is this we're authorizing here?
You're authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract. But I'll make sure, I want to make sure that prior to that contract being executed by the mayor, every council member has a copy of that contract.
Should we amend that? This is just authorizing or giving the authorization to go into. So I think Councilman Carter gave the motion. Councilwoman Martin gave the second. Am I correct? That is certain. Do roll call, yes.
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so there is Councilwoman Scarpese who has some questions or a question about one thirty-one, which is a resolution. Establishing a fair and open process for the award of professional service contracts. Whether you two thousand twenty-two.
Yes. Um, just ask more. May I have motion on the floor, please? May I have second, please? Thank you, Councilman Jordana. Discussion, okay, we'll go into discussion.
Okay, um. I have a member here, Mr. Sisto, asking that attachment A and B. Be read out loud since it wasn't included in the actual resolution. And he also has a suggestion that we add some positions to attachment A and B. So does anyone have attachment A and B? A. Okay, the, the resolution says that we are going to establish a fair and open process for the award of professional services. And then it refers, when you read it, to attachment A and B. But A and B is not included.
That, that would be a typo on my end then. I grabbed the resolution and it's simply, uh, you guys, our council is approving the solicitation of the professionals for calendar year. Twenty twenty-two. I have all the RFPs that we've used, uh, we used last year. So for example, municipal attorney, um, you know, each professional auditor.
Okay, that, that was his comment, that it should be included. And he also suggested that we, uh, write items. On attachment A, um, a financial analyst, in case we want to do a bond.
But we're only soliciting for professionals. I'm confused. I'm a little confused.
Well, that we put out a RFP for a financial analyst.
Oh, for funding, okay.
And if attachment B does not include bond counsel. Or, and the financial attachment B should include a bond counsel and a financial analyst.
Bond counsel is one of the professionals that we solicit for municipal attorney auditor. Planning board attorney.
Parker McKenna.
Yes.
That's right.
All of them.
But I don't think we do have a financial analyst.
No. But I wouldn't need an R F Q for that. I don't have one prepared. I don't even know what the requirement is. So maybe the amount that coming with that or.
So.
So did you want to, we have one more meeting in, in the month. Did we want to? Or what we can do is just amend it to add the services that the council board is talking about.
Right, when I, after the resolution is adopted by council, then I, the notice is separate. Which is advertised in the paper and it lists all the professionals that the municipality has served.
Let me just say this, you, you do not have to specify in the resolution. Exactly which positions that you're doing with it. Just that you are now looking for. The process of fair and open. To, to move forward with the experts and like, I think it's probably sufficient for just, um, as it is.
And then I'll list that other professional, additional professional or any other that is.
He was making it.
Yes.
Alright. Motion to adopt resolution one thirty-one. So, so we just need, okay.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next section. This is second reading, public hearing and adoption of ordinances. So we have ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash one five. That is an ordinance. Regulations, section four thirty, dash fourteen, of the code of the Borough of Penns Grove. So we'll go into public comments. Does anyone from the public have a question or comment regarding, regarding this particular ordinance? Alright, may I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Rambo. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Jordana?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
No.
And Councilwoman Scarpese?
No.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
So we have three and three.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next item is two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-six. That is an ordinance of the Borough of Penns Grove admitting chapter four ten, regulating taxation within the Borough of Penns Grove. We'll go to public comment. Does anyone from the public have a comment or a question regarding this particular ordinance?
Yes.
Comment before I continue this one right now.
For, for this particular ordinance, you can.
I wonder, just, you just broke the top. What was that?
That's the ordinance regulating or allowing cannabis. In our.
I, I didn't even know what it was.
That's okay. Okay, um, motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Giordano?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
It's by the firms and one of the highest mission passes. Thank you, everyone. Next is two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-seven. That is an ordinance amending chapter one forty-one, section three regarding membership terms and naked fees for the economists and economic and redevelopment board. Um, we're going into public comments. Anyone have a question or a comment regarding this particular ordinance? Okay.
May I have a pitch language change?
For, um, for this ordinance?
Yeah. Yeah, this, this is a, an ordinance which lays out the actual terms, duration of terms for the members of the economic board. When the resolution, I'm sorry, when the ordinance was first constructed, it was done so, uh, without terms. So we had to put terms in to make it effective.
What is it, Tom?
Uh, the amount of time that a person who was appointed to the board will actually serve as a member of that board.
That's on, that's on math.
Two years.
Finish that.
Yes.
Okay, any more questions? All right. Motion to adopt? Thank you, Council President. May I have a second? Thank you, Councilman Giordano. Madam Clerk, can you do a?
We have a lot of discussion.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, discussion.
We've talked a little bit about making this a less formal type of, of board since now they're gonna have to advertise to the public and those members are the only ones that really are gonna be able to contribute. I had discussed this with Mr. Tarver and there's a way to, to make this an ad hoc committee. So it's just something to consider if we want to have the formal board where we have advertisements given to the public and so on and so forth. Or if we want to make this something that members can move in and out of freely as the topics change. So that was my comment.
Want to have any, any feedback or thoughts? Of council members?
You, and you talking about the one on twenty?
Redevelopment Committee, or it's a board, actually. Um, as it's set up now, it's set up sort of like the planning where you have to do an advertisement, you have to move into the public.
Right.
And what I'm suggesting that maybe it should be more like the recreation committee where people kind of move in and out of it, you have a core group. But as you're addressing different topics, you can pull and say maybe the tech or a business leader or a developer or whatever, whoever they needed to talk to at the time. And it cuts down on our, uh, that we're needing money for that stuff.
I have a question, how many people can serve on that, on that, um, board or committee or whatever?
Who is now?
Isn't he the chair?
He is the chair.
I'm sorry, could, did any, did, did you guys hear me?
No, well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. I asked how many can serve on that board?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, um, for the mayor, there's four appointments and then for each borough council member serving, they get one appointment. Yeah, that will be, uh, ten, ten, ten people on the board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're just suggesting to change it to far as like?
Well, the commanders and ordinance altogether and the mayor's saying the ad hoc committee, these are the members, you know, maybe you could keep the appointment harsh, the same, or maybe let the board run itself. It's, it's, we're very flexible as to how we can set it up. Just trying to not to be average boys or, you know.
So, really quick, this, um, to me, I think what I didn't like about it initially was the terms were so long when it was first put together. But the fact that it's two-year terms, I think that kind of, um, makes it a little bit more, um, flexible. Because, you know, when you want, one project might be two years, you know? Or it can be a year, it can be three years, but at least, you know, people can move in and out. But I think, I personally think, I thought about what you, what you said as far as being a committee, but I, I personally think that if we have a dedicated board, then things can be done in a structured, a structured way. And then the board has suggestions or recommendations they can bring those to council. For me, I think it's, it would be to our advantage to have an actual board instead of my, my actual board.
Okay. Um, Madam Mayor, in the, in a, in a pre-meeting, uh, you mentioned Mr. McQ, Mr. McQ and Mr. Pling, you both asked me to look into what these boards look like around the state. Um, I don't, I have it in my office, it's in a folder, and you saw my office, because I'm getting to do that, so I can't put my hands on it right now. Um, the reason this board in particular, it was suggested that it be public is because when you're potentially talking to developers, business owners, there is a higher chance of impropriety. So the open public meeting allows, gives the public confidence that there's no backward deals going on. Just because you talked to this person, or just because you showed up there, you know, you, you made a promise to this or that, it's something scrupulous is going on.
Or just because you talked to the mayor.
Right, whoever, right, whoever, yeah, whoever it is. Um, as you know, my job, I tell everybody, nobody can tell me how to tell, talk about it, I told everyone. Uh, but the, the open process is what gets people confidence and lets people know from the get-go that, well, this isn't my decision, this is a decision that based off of the recommendations of the board to council. It's all.
Any other members of council have any thoughts?
I understand what, uh, Irene is saying, um, and also from what Sean's basically saying, I, I'm, I agree, I agree both of them, um. Yeah. I, I understand where both sides are coming from with it. I think it is important, like you said, also, Mary, to have a board in place for it. But I do see the side of where they're coming from also, um. That's just my take on it, uh, but.
I just, I'm going to, just so we're, we're clear, the board exists.
Right.
The board doesn't exist, the board exists, we're clarifying a portion of the board to make it actually legally effective, so, which is just the two-year term, you're setting your terms, so. You're, you're not voting on whether or not the board exists.
Because it already exists, I got you. Right. You said it'd be, it's ten people altogether who have board, and is every seat two years or?
But they're, they're being staggered because you can't do everyone two years. Otherwise, if you do everyone two years, then everyone leaves after two years, you have no board.
It's what, five on five?
All right, so we gotta, um, go on it then?
We're just voting on the board.
We're just voting on the term.
We're just voting on the term.
The term, right, man. Right, the ordinance is just the.
It's just the term.
Right, if you wanted to change it, it would be like a whole different term.
Okay.
So we're, we're voting to, to take it from three to two years?
No, what you're actually doing is you're voting to set the terms because the terms were not properly set in the original ordinance.
Okay. And we will be setting it as.
So we are correcting, yeah, we are correcting something that was not properly done, uh, when the thing was put into place, uh, a year ago.
Okay, the rest of the discussion would have to be taken up in a different meeting.
All right.
It's just, I wanted to get the comments out.
Okay.
All right.
All right, motion to adopt?
Under or not?
We did, we did not. Madam Clerk, please do a roll call, thank you. Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Giordano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Minty?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
All of our motion passes. Thank you. Next up is committee reports. We have buildings and ground. Councilwoman Martin, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Um, I just have a brief, uh, a brief report and that is that the Borough Hall at One State Street has a new roof. Um, also, some of the eaves were replaced as well. And that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin. Moving on to general government and local communities, Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes, um. For JIF, I have received a letter from the JIF Fund talking about abandoned properties and how they're expecting lawsuits on the amounts and the way that the amounts that have been set and have been is being spent. So I forwarded that to the council president, to Mr. Tarver and to Mr. Giordano. I think that we're probably in good shape with it because we do have a dedicated fund, but I just wanted to make everybody aware that that's come on their radar and if we are not set up properly, they would not be defending a lawsuit that we would, um, be receiving. I also distributed to everyone a memo that I got, an email that I got from a company that does renovation of ground fields, which Hensford has signed. They will, um, be able to get grants for a hundred percent of the investigation of what the contaminant is and seventy-five percent of the renovation. So I think that we need to have them come in and do a presentation and identify our ground to risk that at least, rather than breaking, so we can make them more valuable when they go up for auction. Yes. Okay, Erica has the finance part. Uh, one more thing, when I, when I went to the legal municipalities, if we intend to do our bond, and this is what I discussed with Mr. Sistella, um, the bond market is very favorable. We're probably gonna need money for our flooding issues because it's not all gonna be covered by grants and et cetera. They talked about, um, bond right now for a ten-year bond is under one percent. It's about a half percent. And they also have some programs where it's in the first few years that you may pay the interest. So that would give us enough time to go to fix our flooding problems and get them working to start paying back the principal. That was also why this financial analyst and bond counsel came over, Mr. Sistella. And I think that's all I have for today.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to housing, zoning and planning in Shade Tree. Councilwoman Giordano?
Thank you, Mayor Thomas, Council. As far as our, uh, housing and zoning, the planning board hasn't been receiving very much in terms of developers. Uh, it's been, I know at least three months, maybe even four months, that we have had a planning board meeting. And there hasn't been any new offers coming into town, which is a, a real concern. Also, um, I think another reason for that could also be because our ordinances and housing and zoning, we need to update them. There needs to be some changes made, so I, I think we're gonna look into that. Um, other than that, I don't really have anything else. There's nothing going on.
Thank you, Councilman Giordano.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot to mention that, that's right. Casey, our, uh, our zoning officer is, uh, is leaving at the end of the month, the thirty-first. And he's been a big asset for us as far as in, in the town. He's going to marketing part-time, but, uh, he's done a tremendous job for us, and we're, we're gonna need to replace him.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to recreation, Councilman Carter?
Not to go back, but did he give any type of reason that he was resigning or?
Yeah, he's retiring, he's retiring, he's wanting to move out of the area.
That's a good one. Retirement, that is.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, uh, for recreation, um, just basically to announce, we are having our Christmas tree, our first annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony this year. Um, that will be Saturday, December eleventh, from six P M to eight P M at the memorial park on Main Street. Um, if you're not familiar with where that is, it, um, I think the exact address is twenty-eight. Um, was it twenty-eight, is that East Main Street, I believe it is, um. And that, like I said, that's from six to eight P M. We will have, uh, some carols out there, I believe. Uh, we spoke to Bishop Washington and he's gonna have some, uh, folks come out there, not saying they're the only ones that can sing, um, or anything like that. You're more than welcome to come and sing with us, um, enjoy the festivities. Um, you know, all voices are welcome. Um, but yeah, that is Saturday, December eleventh, from six P M to eight P M. Um, it should be a nice event. And then on December eighteenth, uh, we are going to have our holiday toy giveaway. Um, currently, we are looking at doing that at the riverfront. Um, hopefully, it's not too windy out there, um, you know, and, you know, the weather is on our side that day. Um, I'm hoping, um, this is for me, okay? I was. I got you. Um, yeah, that is, uh, December eighteen, uh, for the holiday toy giveaway. Um, time will be discussed. Uh, most likely it'll be at two P M, uh, but we're just, hopefully, right now, we're looking at the riverfront. If there is any changes needed or, uh, we will update the public, um, on a change of venue. Uh, but as of right now, we are gonna do it at the riverfront at two P M on December eighteen. Um, so, you know, families come out, last year was a great event. Um, traffic from the middle school all the way to I G A, all the way down the side of the road, so it was a great event. We're able to bless a lot of families last year, um, and we're hoping to do the same thing this year um, as far as helping families out and kids, um, that nature. Um, other than that, of those two events, uh, the code enforcement report for November, um, from the code enforcement officer Nate, Nathan Dunn, uh, we had twenty-four ten-day notices, ten uncut grass, uh, one pool with no fence, uh, six trash and debris, two inoperable vehicles, five furniture, household waste and eight summits. Um, and this was once again reported to me by Mr. Dunn, um, and I think that, um, just back to go to the toy giveaway, we will have hot chocolate out there once again, apple cider, uh, try to have some sandwiches. We are looking for volunteers to come out and help also outside of the recreation department. Um, so if you want to come help pass some stuff out, you're more than welcome to come help. Um, gonna, uh, looking to get a Santa Claus and a Mrs. Claus for the event as well. Um, but it should be a good event, um, come out, so December, the next two Saturdays, I believe that is, as far as this, the eleventh and the eighteenth, um, come out and celebrate with us, and that's all I have for recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Thank you, Councilman Carter.
I have a little question.
Go ahead.
One, um, for Mr. Dunn, um, it was, uh, to my knowledge that uh, he has given ten-day notices to some of these residents or land property owners. And then with nothing being done, he wrote tickets to them, and then they don't show up at court. Like, what, what do we do with that? Like, it's like, what happens with this?
After they don't show up for court, is it?
Yes, I mean, like, obviously, we can't do anything with them, but what it's
Once it gets to the court process, the court has a, a docket calendar uh, in which the court will put those things on its own docket. They've got to show up, otherwise they're in contempt of court. That's for the court to regulate once those things get uh put into the court system. So if, if that's not being done, that's out of our hands, as in this power. But that's in the hands of the court to enforce them actually attending and appearing for those particular hearings.
So is there a connection between the courts and us to know what they're doing?
There should be. I believe there is. We actually have that charted. I think the business minister can tell you about that.
So, 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 um, I guess everyone calls this, Sharon, by calling F T A, failure to appear. Um, so I get a list of the failure to appear cases, so who didn't appear. I think you're getting at a slightly different point, though, which is, well, the violation is still there. So.
And nothing's being done.
What, right? So now, so it's a situational, it's a situational case-by-case basis because if we had more resources, we could, we could potentially fix what that is. Um, I'll give you an example. There was a house on Beach Avenue that had, um, I mean, just absolute terrible trash stank. It was a lot. It was probably twenty bags sitting there, sitting there, sitting there. They were, um, they were getting, um, code enforcement was getting returned envelopes from that, from that property when they extended. The address just wasn't connecting. So we, the borough, they, then, then the neighbors reported it to the Board of Health. Uh, so I had, I had residents complaining, but also the county contacted me complaining. So we had, we hired a contractor. He came to clean it up. I think that cost five hundred dollars. Um, because, because that included his dump fee, transportation, the labor for picking all that stuff up. The stuff is falling out the bags, so they had, they, you know, they had to get it together. I, I did ask this at the last council meeting. When you look at the resources that we have, how much of the, how, we have limited resources, how much of that we want to put into fixing this stuff? Or issues that we didn't do. The only way to recoup these expenses is by, we have the ordinance allows us to do this. Is if we do fix it, it's to fix it, charge a person, send them the bill, and they don't pay within a certain period of time for the lien on their property. That just gets us into a completely different trap where we then acquire a property that already wasn't well-maintained, that we then own. And hopefully, we can then auction off and, and it's, it's at some point. Um, I, I'm going to talk about this briefly in the presentation again, uh, but I think it's a great point. And again, I think we have to we have, you only have so many problem, you only have so many problem properties at any given time. Um, if I do the math in my head real quick, you're probably looking at about thirty, forty thousand dollars a year in terms of boardups, cleanups, and things like that, addressing those big, those really big issues.
Can I make a comment? Um, two things with that. First of all, um, I don't know about the house on Beach Avenue, but a lot of these properties that are abandoned, that abandoned properties ordinance would uh, do something with that because we can't use that money. We can't put it in the regular treasury. We have to use it to board up and clean up. And so much of it, it is twenty percent of it goes towards the, um, the office stuff. So that, if we get that going, that would help clean up. And another thing, um, I was talking to Sharon the other day because I was talking about the same issue. Why can't we open back up? How many court cases have we seen on TV where they're open? You know, and that's one of the things. Have you ever tried to go on court day? Um, when you're in court online? I tried it one day. It's not a good thing. A lot of people aren't showing up online. For, they say they can't or whatever, sort of just not showing up. So I don't know why we can't open up. We're in here now. Why can't we open the court only in an hour, so many in an, in an hour?
That was the judge's decision.
Well, we
That's actually outside of our purview. It's both the judge's decision and the decision of the administrative office of the courts in consultation with the judge to do that. So we really don't have a role.
But we can at least ask, because if, if, if we have court cases all over the world, everybody's showing up. Maybe ten, fifteen people one at a time, because they're not showing up. They really ain't doing anything. You know, so that was my question.
It's, it's, it's completely in their, but that's it. There's a bright line there for the operation of the courts and the operation of municipal uh, in terms of trying to move, you know, how they move their calendar.
Okay, well, I think you could at least ask because why? Somebody explained to me, why are we shut down when we watch it on TV all the time?
There's, there's nothing wrong with asking. If you'd like, I can make you inquiry.
Because they're not, they're not showing up. They're not showing up for court. And I went on there one day because they were taking out part of the word, and I want to see it. And it, boy, I, I thought it was just me being confused. It was confusing. It was long. Uh, it was terrible. Um.
I will say this, there are many courts across the state, not many, but there are some courts across the state that are open. None of them are really open full-time with full complement bases, but they're different courts are doing different things with that. But I don't think it hurts for us to ask whether or not there's a plan in place for the court to open. And I'd be willing to ask whether or not there's a plan in place.
Okay, because we can, we don't have to have everybody in here that wants to, if they're worried about that. Um, just bring so many in at a time, but I think that will cut down on the people, just assuming they don't have to show up for court. Because, you know, they, they don't show up because they say they don't have Zoom, they don't have this, they don't have that. Still got to make them accountable some kind of way because we still, what do you, when you put a lien on a property, those properties we tore down the other year on Pittman Street, the ones that caught on fire, we tore down. Are we getting our money back from that? No.
And also, just saying, there was an absentee, at least at the beginning of the, and going into the pandemic, for courts to issue F T As with or bench warrants, as opposed to just failure to appear because of the very same reason that you're talking about, that some people didn't have the capability. I think that they are now starting to do bench warrants instead of just a, a basic F T A failure to appear, because the bench warrant has real consequences for the person, whether they have to post bail or actually do some time or face arrest if they don't show up.
Do I need to make a motion for you to?
You, you, you just did.
All right.
Not to cut anybody off, but just to speak on that matter, I understand what she is saying, but in today's age of the twenty-first century, people saying that they don't have Zoom to be just a complete excuse of not to come to court. Um, that is the most, I feel as though right now, the way times is, one of the most easiest ways to do anything at the present time. And to say, I will say ninety percent of people on this earth have a smartphone. Um, so to say you don't have an app, or you can't get an app, or just the latency to not download that, to not come to your court appearance is just complete utter nonsense, in my opinion. Yes, if we're able, I, I understand where she's coming from. If we can ask, ask. Whether they say yes or no, it's just like, to me, people are just making excuses of why they can't do something. Um, Zoom is one of the most easiest things that has gotten America through this pandemic in the past two years.
The, in, in Sharon, the court administrator was here, she would tell everyone that if you truly don't have access to technology, the court is mandated by A O C to let, allow you to appear in person.
Right. And, and I'm, I'm sure most people, you can get them on your phone, your computer, tablet, they, they just use that as an excuse of why not showing up. But I bet if those bench warrants start coming out, those smartphones or those tablets are going to start coming up. I guarantee that.
That one's shut down. You're thinking it's back, isn't it? That one's shut down.
Yeah, because of that.
Because of that.
Right. That's just my take, but we can proceed.
All right, moving to public works, streets and roads, Councilman Rambo?
I'm not saying I'm for this movement.
Hi, Mayor. I have a question. The forecast is going to snow tomorrow. That's what I'm saying. I'm told that, I'm told that, that historically, Carnegie Point Public Works does not plow side streets. No? Okay.
No, it's only because we own the grass, the dust, and it's, that's what they said. Now, you can pick up more and more to a foot, but.
Just, I just, I'm old enough to know that, like, when it comes to something like this, I know that we, as a borough, have to have a plan together for, for bad weather. And I'm just putting that out there. We need to have, we should have a plan together. I don't, maybe everything will be fine.
I suppose they're going to plow in there and plow the park.
Okay.
Tell them to go out and get the rain.
So that's the point. So like, if we have to go out and get someone that plows and salts, I would have to know that ahead of time so that we're ready.
But also, and that means, uh, communication with the residents to move their vehicles, so that the, the cloud can get down the street.
Stuff like that.
That'll never happen, so.
The clouds just go around the cars. Right. Plow them in, lock them in, yeah.
That's just the way it happens.
They've never done that.
Well, well, since you all mentioned that, just to, just in your head, we need to put in, um, Mr. Tarver, uh, or there's a resolution for Penn Street for them to move their cars when, um, uh, it snows, because that street is very small. Don't care. Put on top of each other. Now, um, you, you move into the next street until they come through. That's all. If you, if, you're going to have to move your car if you want to plow. Because if my van barely makes it, the truck, there's no plow on there, maybe. So it's, and the way they park, just the one side, if you look at it, they need to park in the driveways. That would resolve that. Um, but if you want to plow to that straight, sorry now. Yeah, the, the beginning of it, um, if you want to plow on, when it's going to snow, just move your vehicle, and you can put it out. It'll come through.
Is there no space for people to park on just one side of the street?
They own one side of the street. It's, it's, it's very small, but the people on the one side, most of them have driveways. Or move into the next street if you want to plow, or don't call and say they get plowed. They've always had that problem, and we've never resolved that. It should be no parking on the street when it's snow covered. Even if you can set it up with the street department for so many hours, if they say from seven to nine, so they go and do it, they can put the car back or something, but we don't get it.
What happens in your town? Because they've got narrow streets, one-way streets.
So, okay, so, um, with, okay, um, some streets just don't give plow. So what they do is, when I, and I've lived in two different places, when I lived in their Cooper Hospital, all of our streets got plowed because we were in a place So, so public works, so we can't compare Penn Grove to Camden because, because Camden has its own public works department, its own powers plow, and it already has its, it, it lays up its contracts for, uh, plowing and salt removal way ahead of time.
But, but.
Put out an R F P.
So my question is, the narrow streets, what do they do? Do people park around the corner?
Yeah, it's your, it's the same thing.
All the time, people complain because they don't get to, well, you don't want to move your car, how the plow get there? Who wants, and if it's a lot, who wants to show up on that? So that's something we, we need to work on this year, just in case we get to sit up.
One thing that could help then is if you know the poples, our cars, what is all the poples will be best. So if you know the poples, that was people's cars, in which, you know, they just expand, that's the way it comes, so that would be helpful.
All right, moving on to public safety, Council President Minty.
Um, I just have two things, um, John was shaving tires. I don't even know the date when he retired, but we went to the retirement thing they had for him, and it was nice. And also, we are still, we are looking for emergency management director and deputy, as I said, we need two people. Uh, one of the suggestions was that we check your point to see if we can do a shared service agreement with them with that. So I guess we'll look into that as we look for somebody, um. I didn't get a chance to back over there to quote the, um, requirements for it.
Okay.
But we'll look into that because we definitely need that. Um, and there's some other things we're working on to address mental issues, miss, mental issues. But, um, I don't know, um, we're just going to talk about it, or we'll just wait till next year until we get it together a little more.
That's a lot. Thank you. All right, moving to departmental report. The business administration report.
Okay, okay, very, if, um, councilor is a mayor, you, and senior staff, if you check your emails, I just sent you this presentation that the mayor asked me to give. So you can pull it up on your laptop or phone, or you can look on the screen. No, which? Do it off my computer, and then you can just, just, um, hold this thing down. Okay, thank you. You guys will pull up to see. Greg Martin, if you want to pull up, you can see on the screen. Okay, next one. So just to, just to, uh, just to remind everybody, this position is still new, and there's still adjustments that are being made. Um, the tax assessment, municipal court and municipal clerk, um, are somewhat counterparts, we're on the same line or the organizational chart. Um, fire and E M T, finance, police, zoning, housing, code enforcement, uh, all reporting directly in the professional services, insurance services agreements. We work together as well. In a police department, um, with, we have around twenty-five thousand dollars left for this calendar year for what's known as other expenses. And we also have money from American Recovery that's been segmented for the police department. We're in the process, oh, and we have money from the U S D A grant. So there are a few pots of money, and we are purchasing some things that the police department needs. That includes things like, that includes things like, um, um, containers, bullets, and other, and other equipment that our officers need. All of our officers have been trained on de-escalation and anti-bias. And we are continuing to work through personnel staffing and hiring issues. We ask, next slide, we ask that you, um, we ask that you if you know many good people to, uh, that, um, you can see as being a good police officer, or you know a, a good officer in another place. Um, we ask that you recommend that they work in, in Penn, in Penn Grove. Uh, the police department likes for people to pick up the applications in person, because they like to talk to the person once they pick up the application. Department of Finance, the goals for the winner are for the corrective action plan. Um, you will, you as council, you will see the corrective action plan for next council meeting, the last meeting in December. Uh, the most important thing that we will recommend in that is just how money moves from the, from the, from the customer to the staff person to the bank. Uh, we also are looking into, um, we're also looking into adding a merchant or P O S system that will allow people to purchase or buy certain things online, um, so they don't have to exchange cash, checks, or money orders with the staff. We have a requisition process, we have a requisition module in Edmonds, but it's not fully implemented yet. Um, we also updating our, we also are creating vendor packets to get us up to speed and up to compliance with federal and state guidelines. Um, earlier, uh, someone mentioned, uh, bonds, uh, we have, and we do already have a capital budget. And we will soon, uh, will soon be exploring, um, bond council and, and there's, there's way worse is when you go out for municipal bonds, or that, there's no, there's a company that stands between you and the bond. And they make their money off the sale of the bond, so we don't pay anything for it. As a borough, uh, the money comes out of the sale of the bond itself. And although it's not financed, just at the bottom, uh, we continue to work with our grant writers, Treehead, and that's mostly right now on issues related to street and road repair and public safety. Every once in a while, somebody will send us grants, and then we'll see, we'll check eligibility and then share that with the grant writer. Excellent. Thank you. Code enforcement. Uh, we are currently using Microsoft Access, and it's good but not great. I'll get to that more later. Um, as you can hear, as you heard from the report that Mr. Carter gave earlier, we're still hovering around. Um, as you can heard, as you heard from the report that Mr. Carter gave earlier, we're still hovering around sixty percent response to ten-day notices, meaning. Ten-day notice is issued and within those ten days, the issue is fixed, which means forty percent of cases are summons that go to court. And just, they're just there in a picture, you can see on the right, just two examples of, of violations that we had. Did you, um, we got a chance to meet the New Jersey EPA at the League of Municipalities. Um, and they will, they, there's an email exchange, they have some resources that can help us with our illegal dumping issue. Um, they can help inspect, they can help maybe find money for cleanup. As I find more information from them, I will share it with you probably at the next council meeting or maybe by email before. That says lead not led, we lead by complaint. So anytime someone calls Sharon Williams or myself. Um, we, we share those complaints with code enforcement and that's, that targets where they go, or. Uh, we send them to the most, they're sets that was problematic. I don't know, I said, I said it to those problematic areas. That we had and, and just in driving around, our code enforcement has zones and that's how they, where they go. Lastly, we have some money from American Recovery, um, and. Um, we, it's time for us to re-educate our community on what our ordinances and rules are. People get confused on things like trash. Um, how to pack it, where it should go. So we want to create and design a door hanger and door hanger specifically because. We know that people don't read their mail when it comes from places like the government, they look at it as junk mail. When you put it on their door, they can't miss it and it's a little bit, it's a little less likely they, for them to ignore. Um, both Nate and Tyrone are committed to once those door hangers are published, printed to hang on one doors. I might hang out too. If you wanna walk around with us, feel free. It'll be a great few days. With zoning. Uh, Mr. Giordano, he took my best line on this slide, but we need to work with the planning zoning board to update our out, our outdated zoning and master plan. Um, this is really, really important because the way it stands now, it is not in the best position for us to attract the type of businesses that we want to attract. If we want those guidelines to balance public safety needs with business success. You're gonna see me talk about this again later, but just to remind everyone, Governor Murphy signed a law early this year that applicant, uh, that many types of applications. Must be available online. I just, I just lost my computer. Although, alright, next slide.
I can do this.
You can, you can, I go for it. Okay, thank you. Uh, housing inspection, so, so. Let me be really clear with this, this is gonna come up again when it comes to hiring. Mister, Mister Giordano earlier noted that Mister Karma is leaving. Mister Karma has a unique set of skills. It's hard to find someone, especially in this area, that can do this, cause he does, he has two separate jobs. And that's housing inspection and zone, they're two completely separate things. Um, with that said, mostly what's done in housing inspection right now is the issuance of certificates of occupancy for apartments or houses that people move into. Our goals for twenty-twenty-two include fully implementing the abandoned properties act, um. Uh, I got it on there, Miss Mincy. So what is it? So this is what it takes for that. It takes four things had to happen. We need to update our software to be able to track what those abandoned properties are. You'll see more of that in a moment. The staff has to be trained and the owners of those abandoned properties have to be educated on what their requirements are. We have to initiate the process. Um, there probably shouldn't be a fourth bullet point, but I also wanna announce this good news, that DCA. Will be back starting January sixth on Thursdays from one to three-thirty PM. To accept building, construction, plumbing, electrical permits. They, the way it happens right now, somebody comes in, fills out the form, puts it in the mailbox, and it has to wait to hear back. The way it used to happen and the way it will happen again is DCA will be here in this, right, actually right here at this table on Thursdays. And, um, all of the developers. Contractors will know this and they'll know this is the time to submit their, submit their application to DCA. Oh, Mister, Mister. Oh, okay, thank you. So all this, so all this stuff that we wanna get done, which we're limited by is capacity. Um, so. We need municipal management software. I'm gonna, there's a whole slide on that and I'll show you in a minute, to track our properties, our complaints, our ownership, our code enforcement violations. Without that, we, we, we had code enforcement using Access. Um, I, I, I pretty much have no software that I use, um, to, to do this, so I'm, I'm relying on the spreadsheet, which is dynamic, as they call it. The other, um, capacity issue we have is hiring a custodian. We need to hire a custodian, housing and zoning inspector and police officers, specifically in the custodian, housing inspector. This administration and this council, we really need to come to an agreement on how we're going to pay new people to come into this borough. Uh, looking at the reality of what people expect in this current economy and how we balance that with how people who worked here for decades. Who are, who are really, in the grand scheme of things, underpaid, how we balance those two realities. And we need to have a direct, frank conversation that's budget-inspired and, and looking at the, and looking at. Um, the national trends as, as an indicator of the direction that we need to go to.
How many people, so, one custodian?
Yes, one, is, is, well, one custodian, one housing zoning inspector, maybe two. Um, and, um.
One, two, three, four? How many, how many?
Housing and zoning is, is technically one. Now, because we're in budget season for twenty-twenty-two, this is all, this is all budget, this is all, um, dependent on budget. Yeah, oh, and by the way, you can't, Casey leaves at the end of the month. There, there are only a few positions that a municipality absolutely has to have, and the zoning officer is one of them. You absolutely, you don't need to have, I know, as much as you love, don't have to have a business administrator, you don't have to have a police director, but you have to have a municipal clerk, you have to have CFO, you have to have zoning officers. So we absolutely have to have that position filled by January first.
Can we ask Nate to step into the bridge? Until we get started.
I don't wanna speak on specifics, um, in open session, where I will say is. Whoever gets, I will say, I wanna, I don't wanna speak on specifics, but I would say whoever gets that position. Will have to have a certain level of training already and then already looked into it. That person will also be. Pretty much required to take, uh, Rutgers offers the training for, for that position, that person will be required to take it in their first couple, just like. Not to put you on the spot, like our, our deputy clerk, she started off her first year, we stayed in training, and that's what we, that's how that position will start.
But the understanding is that somebody has to commit. And you don't have somebody here to say yes or no, they're all that matters, can bring you after ten days.
Right, that's why I really need to recommend somebody by the next council meeting, that, so that person can start January first.
So we need to advertise for the position.
We need to advertise with the position, but we also have to look at the budget, we also have to look at what the salary is gonna be, because. I've been in awkward position several times in, in the small organization and I don't wanna be put in that position again, so we have to, we have to have. An agreement, stick with it, have a process, stick by it in that hiring process.
So you need to have a working session with the council, basically.
That will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ju- just a suggestion, Cory Spoy is gonna be in the same position.
For, for what?
For Zany.
Over.
Yeah, cause he's retiring from.
No, he's not in.
And Cory Spoy, right.
Abandoned properties, that's all he does do.
Maybe we can look over there and get some money for.
Bob Smith, I've already talked to him, he, he wants nothing to do with.
What? Okay, can I ask you this? You said we only need one housing zoning inspector. What happens to the two part-time housing inspectors? It's in the budget.
Well, what, when I say, it, it, okay, think of it this way. If the housing inspector were twenty-hour work week, and the volume of applications that we get, that he can, he or she could.
No.
Uh, do that volume of work.
No, that's not what it is. You're talking about a housing and zoning inspector. These people are gonna do. The re-inspections that haven't been done. The two part-time people were supposed to be hired to do the yearly inspections that haven't been done in God knows when. That's what they were for, those two. That's something, that's different.
So I, I, I agree with you. I think in that case, we should probably think about actually splitting the, like, not having all these people have the same job title. It's splitting, and probably splitting their job into two separate. If that's the case, it should really be two separate, um, jobs.
It is. You got housing and zoning, whatever Casey does, that's one thing. Then it's supposed to be two people who will just do the re-inspections.
But that is how, that, that is housing inspection. This only is the separate part.
Well, he's doing, okay, so my understanding is when you, somebody came in today and left some money. For an inspection, cause they was getting that thing ready, so they do the initial ones.
Right.
After a year, somebody's supposed to go back and inspect that. We haven't had that, and we've got fifty million hundred, that's a number. Uh, rentals that need to be inspected.
Okay.
So when the money was put into a budget, that's the monitor, cause we got to argue. It's supposed to be two part-time people to do those yearly inspections. That's what they'll do.
This is, you know, suggestions, Madam Mayor, and Miss Mincy, Mr. Giordano, and Miss Carpen, and everyone else. Can we have a, I don't know if this is a committee thing or what, but I really think this is such an important thing to hire the right person, have the right training. Understand the job functions, responsibilities, understand the abandoned properties, that all that is, I, I think we're behind. The software will help, we're getting there, you'll see the, I think, in the slide or two, but I really think this will be helpful for, for us to have a meeting just on this particular topic.
We were already, I had already talked to the mayor, we were talking about having a working session next week anyway, but, um. I don't wanna keep waiting for the software, I've been hearing about the software all year. Um, somebody's gotta get hired. I know the zoning thing is important, we gotta get them in.
Yeah.
But I, I, to me, as a, if I was a, a renter and my place is falling apart, I want somebody to come and inspect it, cause the landlords. Even if, when I talk to the police officers and the human, when they go on some of these houses, they tell me how terrible it is, so that's something that's needed to. I'm just saying. We just need more people. So we can talk about all that.
Yes.
Can we reach out to the surrounding towns and see if we can get somebody resuming immediately until we hire someone?
Sure.
Even if they're like five hours or, just somebody.
Alright, so that's Cory, so Cory Spoy, Pennsville. Who else?
Well, you can, you can figure out.
Yeah, okay, just the concept. Okay.
Just, you know, for a temporary measure.
Sure.
I've got one question about the custodian, has to clean the entire building or just the courtroom?
It's the clean, it's the clean, it, it's, it's ideally this person's gonna clean this entire building, including the courtroom and police department. But also, streets, when the time is necessary, the streets, the, all of our property, streets, streets department. I really, really, really wanna hire a person that also can know, study as a weed whacker. Because it's, 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 it's such a, um, high demand that we have in this borough. And, and Rich has, you know, volunteered to do this on his time. I'm not the best with the weed whackers, no one's asked me to do it. Um, but it, we, we, and we'll figure that out. Alright, and then on police officers, we probably, at this point, have two vacancies for, for, for officers. I'm gonna move on. Okay. So, um. The CFO's office, Erica's office, uh, my office, um, the, the attic. Met the clerk's office, admitting offices downstairs, the streets department. Two, possibly three storage spaces are all filled with the trash, boxes of papers, that they back, no. No, I mean, no exaggeration to the, to the eighties, um, in certain cases, including, including technology that doesn't even exist anymore. Like big floppy this, they're like, no, not floppy this, big floppy this, um. Big floppy this, so. During the given municipalities, we met some, we met some vendors, this is what they do. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to them, see what their cost is, we reserve some money from the COVID, probably doesn't, gonna hit the, the, uh, the full amount. Need to analyze, and, and that, where they will help us analyze, scan, discard and shred documents that we have. Um, we are spending money, including on the bills that you proved tonight, we're spending money on a storage space, space that we, we should not spend, spend money on. Um. So we want, and we wanna use our, our own properties better. So here is, I mentioned it a few times, that we need, um, sorry, Sharon, that we need, uh, software, and I just wanna break down exactly what this process looks like. Um, all the, all the experts say that this, you know, and it's, it's like, Doc wanted me to say this, yesterday our power went out in this building for like ten minutes randomly. Well, it wasn't just this building, it was, it was the, it was the whole area. I went, I went one, Atlantic City. Electric's website, we, it was the, this section was the only, and all of South Jersey was the only thing that went down, but you, they have an outage map on their website. So generator will cost twenty, will cost twenty thousand. The part that's nice and annoying is, cause nothing in Penn Grove is ever simple. Is that not, is not a, they, they can't just put the generator there, they also have to.
Okay.
Move the HVAC system, cause it's in the way. And they have to put a, a shield up, cause generators are loud when they're, when they're on, so that it doesn't disturb, that's, so it doesn't disturb the neighbors. Uh, Sean Smith, our engineer is working on this and all recommendations. Steve and I are gonna work on finding out where we're getting money from for this, to pay for it. The next part is laptops and desktops. There are several staff here, um, including our tax assessor, our assistant treasurer, who had desktops that. Were really designed for, uh, Windows Seven, uh, meaning that they're outdated, they're not safe to use, they're extremely slow, and they need to be replaced. You see here to the right, this is the quote we got from Green Tech, um. Uh, that number might seem high to you, that, that, that number is, is a little high, because it's a supply type, supply, supply chain issue right now with technology. The software for year one that we're talking about, which covers absolutely everything in the borough, so code enforcement, housing. Um, it's something that works along with the police, it's something that supports the clerk's office in terms of. Marriages, dog licenses, the things that they, the things that they deal with. That is, the first year is twenty thousand, after that, that mountain goes down a lot, because it no longer includes the training amount. The way it works is, it, it's a license per person. You get, you pay for the first one, the fifth one free, so that's five licenses that will be used. Uh, and that total is forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. We already have nine thousand dollars of debt from the American Recovery money, so the other thirty. Seven thousand dollars, uh, we have to identify in this current year and next year's operating budget. Cause, um, I don't, it would, it would be, it would take too long to wait for this to be a capital expense.
If you're talking about the HVAC on there, make sure that you contact South Jersey Energy.
Oh, you know, I'm so glad you're saying this. We get, oh, you're, oh, you're, I'm gonna get you excited, this for a reason. Down at the, at the league, I met, um, did State of New Jersey has free energy audits for municipalities? So we're, we're scheduling one, we're gonna get a free energy audit for all of our buildings. Should we have solar panels? I don't know, they'll tell us. Are there other ways for us to serve, uh, um, save energy costs? There are, and they will recommend it, so that's in the works.
The last I saw, they pay eighty, if we upgrade our air conditioning to energy efficient. I think it was like ninety-seven percent, you don't pay eighty percent of the installation, the purchase of the installation.
Um, I'm almost done here, um, working with the engineer, these are the four main things we are working together on, um, flood mitigation. Uh, we, we, we know we have issues with flooding, our engineers doing a great job of reports and things. The great news is that now that Congress has passed the infrastructure bill, we know New Jersey's gonna get a lot of that money. And I'm down here in Salem County, we, we will be able to get that money. Um, I'm sitting through a workshop next week on how we get to spend that money, so by the next council meeting, I should be able to update council on how much money we can potentially get. To, to deal with our infrastructure issues, including flooding. Uh, the engineer is also managing street repair, their council just approved some of that, those, uh, grants today. Uh, building demolition, it looks right now, the demolition's gonna start in Penn Grove in late January, early February. Right now, it's going through the RFP process. And of course, the park upgrades, uh, tonight, one of those, you approved some of the first equipment that we're buying for the park. And Miss Walker, the finance office, myself and our engineer, will continue to purchase and work with the, um, whoever to get those things repaired. Um, I already mentioned buildings and grounds, I already mentioned the generator, and, um, Miss, Miss Martin mentioned the roof and gutters. Um, we also have some issues with the streets building on East Harmony Liberty Fire Station, uh, we're working on that. And the pump, Mr. Smith sent us a report on our pump areas, they need maintenance. I will have to hire, well, we as a borough will have to hire some contractors to do some heavy-duty landscaping around our pumps, they haven't been maintained. At the level that we would like to see.
Uh, isn't that the county's responsibility?
Well, we on the land.
I think it's county's responsibility.
Okay, can we discuss that? Can we discuss it offline? Okay, thank you. Um, and then lastly, we need new lawn care equipment, because we can't, the public, uh, is, is fantastic, as Cory's point is, and as awesome as the contract is. We can't depend on them to do everything, so we do need to see our whole lawn equipment. Economic development, uh, these are the goals that were established in the first meeting with the Economic Redevelopment Board, Madam Mayor. Uh, five more restaurants in Penns Grove, we know we can get five, because we already have so many people that asked us how they can get a lunch truck, or how, which space do we have for a restaurant? So the entrance is there. Ten new businesses in total, a new grocery store. Um fifteen new homeowners, there is a housing demand in Salem County right now. And um in an arts community where, because people, they love government, but they love art more, they wanna see murals, they wanna see statues and and. And sculptures, and 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 it's, it's, art shows be part of economic development. Alright, almost done here, bye, um so here, these are just some of our challenges and opportunities. Uh I think you guys know all of this, but us, it bears repeating, we have valuable property that's subject litigation, that includes the waterfront and Broad and Main Streets. Um Wawa, the, what I call the Wawa Plaza, that is moving forward, right now they're just waiting to get some permits from the State of New Jersey for water. You just, council just updated the ERB meet uh rules, so the ERB meeting will be, the ERB will, it's, will, will continue to meet. Tonight, um tonight council passed uh can, the cannabis industry, which is really groundbreaking for this municipality. And um the next thing that, um the next thing that I recommend and focus on is a process for reviewing applicants that want to come to Pensboro. And making sure that we have application process for them, I specifically asked at the local municipalities, the CRC directly to their face. They can give us some guidance, support in that process, they committed to that, they would, so we should be able to update everyone on that. Um I talked, I kept talking about the software, what it includes is letting us know exactly what's going on with our products. Virginia Avenue in particular, um if I would, if if someone says, what's the square footage of such and such that the borough holds on on Virginia Avenue? I didn't put too many buttons, and I didn't go to many sites to get the right information, so that software that I keep bugging you about will help us do that, we'll be able to have that information. Uh and then just lastly, unrelated to anything, um Mr. Pase, you asked about this in an email, here's more detailed answer. Um we are getting a very modern policy manual, it's fully handled, this is Tarver's office is working with administration on. We're gonna train everybody on that, and then we will, um we will re-engage with evaluation process. And employees may, may which a member, since they work here. That's all I have to say about that.
Alright, finance officer. So, that's the question. Uh December sixth, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, is two point two one percent. Uh finance office receipts. Inventory also identifies areas for municipalities may require a further technical assistance. In answering the best practice survey, borough of Penshurst scored between, which means no hate is built up from the final. The borough receives seventy five percent of the potential. With the approval of interlocal services for public works and tax collection. The municipality will receive the remaining, the remaining twenty five percent. Which would be one thirty seven, five hundred. And I would also like to um read a letter.
That we can't help that until we upgrade ourselves. No, I just said it's a.
I'd like to um read a note that Steve asked to read for everyone. He says he would like to thank mayor council and the people who have their support and sympathy in regards to the passing of the. It is an extremely difficult time, to see and hear the caring words and actions that really touch our hearts and is helping us through this. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, Steve and Patty. That's it, that's all I have. Okay, moving to the police director, Director Rivera.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, I'll give you some of the numbers that we looked at for all of uh November. And it also includes this first week of December. As far as some of the crimes are concerned, twelve thefts, there's one burglary, ten domestic violence instances. There's six people, six people registered for Megan's Law. What? As social offenders, you know, this is something where, you know, people in the neighborhood need to be made aware, and they can look this up. Online, so they know where these individuals are living in the neighborhoods.
That's, excuse me, is that link on our website?
You have to look it up. We had nine car accidents, one robbery, and eight uh instances of reported shots fired. Our officers stopped a hundred and thirty one vehicles, that's pretty much quadruple of what they used to do. Earlier on, and it, so this shows you the new hires are out there, they're very active, engaging in activity to prevent crime. Identify who some of the culprits are, and and it's a egregious acts throughout the community. We had a fire last week, I don't know if the fire captain's on, we can talk more about that, of our officers responded to that as well. Uh earlier in November, we had four officers volunteer to camp out. In Barbara Park, I'm laughing because I was there, I promised not to sleep over and I kept my promise. Other people that promised to sleep over, slept in their car, that doesn't count as a camp out. But everyone had a great time, and and it was, it was phenomenal to get families together and and interact with uh police officers. We had one house that was town owned, that we secured finally, where we had squatters living in. So now that, that that problem no longer exists, they can't gain access to it, and we avoided a very long drawn out uh court process. Myself, I attended the leading municipalities, we talked to different uh vendors in the policing industry, I was very uh productive. And we, we, we attended the gospel, um singing the music that was playing down the waterfront that Sunday, that was, that was a great program. And the church, twice this past Sunday, we're gonna be doing that a lot more, uh the the congregations. That were at these houses of worship were very appreciative, as as were um pastors. And 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 the preachers. So that, that was very positive, another positive thing that we did was on Friday, participated in the parents' uh fun night. At Carlton, and I got caught dancing, I don't think there's any video. There were probably, there were two other families there, and that was a great program, and and our officers got to interact. Uh with the families there as well as the staff, incredible staff, that volunteered, come in at nighttime to the schools. You know, and and on that high note, you know, we're there at seven thirty, eight o'clock at night. And then two hours later, we respond to one of the most tragic incidents that anyone could even imagine. Where a five year old baby was, was killed in their home, high month of April. Um and it's the same two officers. So, you know, it goes to show you a both coaster of emotions and the different things that, that the officers are dealing with on a daily basis. I spent three hours um at the gardens today, talking with their management, trying to come up with some different scenarios. This Mincy's been working diligently on mental health, and how we could work together on these issues, so. The, the management is committed to opening up their community center for the residents to come in. And on a daily, uh I'm sorry, on a weekly basis, they're gonna get to talk to councils, they're gonna, they're gonna have more community outreach. They admit, you know, wholeheartedly, like we all do, dealing with this pandemic, that COVID has really shut down a lot of things. That's why I wanted to highlight one of the offenses already to you, which was domestic violence, when you see something like that taking place. You know, for whatever the root causes are, being cooped up together in a household for extended period of time certainly doesn't help the situation. When we have women and victims of domestic violence who used to going out to work. And and escaping their abuses for a day, on on a daily basis while they're out at work. And maybe their husband's working a night shift so they don't have to interface with each other, that is all changed. So we're gonna be reaching out uh with the management to work on workshops over there. And uh I think, I think it's gonna be uh very beneficial, and that's all I have for the time, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera, it is Chief Adam. I don't. He didn't answer me that.
I can speak to the fire a little bit more. So there was, it was a multiple alarm, multiple jurisdictions uh responded, the firefighters did an incredible job of containing. Fire to the building, it had the potential of spreading to the power uh line outside on the telephone pole, that that was prevented. Uh the incident has been ruled an accident, and and fortunately there were no other structures around it. This was on the corner of North Smith and Main, it's a privately owned uh building, which we don't own. And the same individual owns the abandoned house next to it, so we're in talks with them now on what they're gonna do with the structure. Because it can't remain the way it is, it's been ruled unsafe by the state, and uh we'll proceed accordingly.
Thank you.
Just to comment on that, um I'm glad earlier in the year that we were able to clean up behind that place. Um all the debris and everything that was back there, because if not, I just think that could have just spread that much faster. And tore up that whole street, um because it was a lot of bushes behind there that just would have caught on fire. And spread it further down the road, you know, to even go to the next house behind it, so I'm glad we were able to get that situated. Um because that fire was bad enough, but it could have been a lot worse if that never took place.
And depending on which wind, which way the wind's blowing, literally, I mean, you have the the convenience store next, right next to it, and the gas station too, so. Well, just a good thing that we didn't have the wind of the night before.
Um just to add to our chief's report, he said he has um two applications to be presented. I didn't tell him we had a meeting tonight, so that's my fault, you know, you know, some people you gotta tell them all the time. I'll tell, I'll take that one for now, um and about the fire, also, um one thing. This trouble is gonna keep you busy in the month of January and February, uh we don't have an ordinance for fires. Did it, tell me out here, Sharon.
Some of the insurance should be property owner have any, there's nothing that I'm okayed. Where uh that requires the uh owner's insurance or property insurance to. Reimburse or require demolition.
Yeah, they will come and find out if we have that ordinance, so that so much of that money, they'll give to us in case they don't tear the building down. Then it doesn't come out of our pockets, so we really put that in.
Do we have an EMS? For ambulance transport, if anybody gets picked up by our break, is transported to a hospital, and we submit. As per ordinance, to get the reimbursement for that service, you know, we have that. Okay.
I have the EMS report, she said we are very busy and continue to have to travel further. Have a further hospitals, travel to further hospitals due to many hospitals being on divert. Divert means they don't have enough ambulances to bring patients for a certain amount of time. EMT will begin January of Fed. And we'll have four students attending this class, other than that, that is all we have, we continue to do our best.
Excuse me, moving on to mayor comments. Last January. So a lot of things that happen in our town, they're also happening across the country. Um but for our town. Myself and members of council, we want to address that. So um there's twenty five thousand dollars that's in the American Recovery Fund that we can actually put together a grant. And it's called a violence reduction grant. So what this will do, um this grant will be used to address violence prevention and trauma recovery. Any organization with a five oh one C three status can apply for this grant. Uh the grant application will be made available uh within the next uh week or so. There's some things we still have to work out with that, but um the grant money must support Pensboro that rescue, adults. And their families who've been impacted by the criminal justice system, either as perpetrators or victims. Application should include funding a program that works to break often generational cycles that lead to violence, substance abuse and or crime. By giving participants insight into their own strength and strengths and abilities. Uh to create legal paths to success, so we are committed to investing. Uh that, the grant funds to support community based public sector projects that will also reduce and prevent violence in our borough. So um there will be more information about that, I thank council for supporting um this. And uh the information will be on our website, and it will be www.pensboro nj.org. Or slash grants, and that information should be on that, on the website uh within the next week or so. And once it's on the website, we will have a chair on the Borough of Pensboro Instagram page, and then um we can all individually. Share on our pages as well. Um this Saturday, as Council Carter mentioned about uh the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, so that's gonna start at six. We're also gonna have a vigil with a baby that was killed. And we, we're gonna do that around, give people time to get there, but we'll have a moment of silence to do that around six thirty. And then at seven PM, we'll have the Christmas tree lighting. Um I also want to add that this Saturday, the Elks Lodge across the street. They are sponsoring or or hosting, I think it's a potluck, and um for, for seventy kids. Seven to ten kids and their families, and also give the children toys. So I want to thank the elves for um for doing that, they asked me to help them locate some of these children, so I was able to do it. Also, as Council Carter mentioned, December eighteen, will, there'll be more information about our toy giveaway. Uh we are currently waiting, this is why I didn't show you this, um Council Carter, we're waiting on Saint James. To give back to us, so let us know we can have it there, because if we can, you know, at least we won't be down at the river where it's. So we'll keep everyone updated as to that over the next couple days, but you'll see a flyer that'll go out once we get that confirmed. Uh this past Friday, December third, myself, uh Director Rivera, Officer Guyerson. And Officer uh Assaveta, we were all at Carlton School for their family dinner night. That was so much fun, the kids were playing bingo, they were eating food, and they had so many children and their families that. They had uh activities broken up into two rooms, so in the cafeteria, they were doing bingo. And the other session was going on in the gym, and they were playing connect games that I hadn't seen since I was a kid, Operation. And I had to contain myself, because I was like, oh my god. Excited about that game, but they were playing Connect Four, checkers, they had this big chess board on the floor, and they're like playing, they're walking on, it was. Really cool, and then um we actually got to see like a little dance by the director, our dancing director Rivera. Um so that was a lot of fun, they were very, very grateful to have our participation. And I also want to congratulate the high school students um at um. I can't pronounce her last name, Vicki. No, Paganas, I think it is. I'm sorry Vicki, if you're listening. Palagatus. So the children, a few months ago, they have a team and it's called Team Local Core. And they entered a climate change competition. And their project was putting, and what do you call that Sean, it's like a hydro hydroponics. They wanna grow their own vegetables. So they made a video, they had me come, we did the video together and they submitted it. Well, the award ceremony was last Wednesday. And they came in second place, which, which I was very proud of them. Of course, they won a first place, you know, it's like first place, but they were able to raise fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, for their hydroponics project. So the idea is that they're gonna be growing vegetables, fresh vegetables, and eventually we can get a farmer's market, you know, once every so, or once a week, or whatever we decide, once the weather breaks, they can supply the farmer's market. The farmer's market can get the fresh vegetables from the students. Students will, so I'll be working with them further for that. And then they have another project that they're gonna be working on. And I think it's called, they're scooters. So you know how when you go to some places or some towns like in Baltimore, they have them, you can rent a scooter and you ride it somewhere and you leave it wherever you leave it. Well, Ms. Vicki wants to do something similar here in Pennsboro for the kids, because a lot of kids, you know, maybe they can't walk to school, but their parents can't take them and they can't be bused or whatever. They can actually ride scooters to school. So she's gonna give me more information. So I told her I would love to support that.
Just make sure that they do in those areas like Baltimore, even in like Miami, stuff like that. Once those scooters go out a certain distance, they stop working automatically. So just make sure they include that.
Okay. Last but not least, a gentleman by the, by the name of Leo Mincy, he passed away, his service is tomorrow. So we did a resolution. I was asked by a family member if we could do a resolution proclamation, so we're doing a resolution for them, which we passed. So I just wanna read it really quick. A resolution of condolence to the family of Leo Mincy, whereas Leo Mincy was a resident of the Borough, Pennsboro for all fifty years. Whereas his personality worked at the sporting employment at the American dredging company Inc., where he had the opportunity to work all over the United States. And whereas he worked for American dredging for many years, retiring in nineteen twenty-two. And whereas after retirement, Leo started his own lawn hauling business. His love for people, and Leo acting at the Pennsboro Taxi and Uber Service for many years. And whereas Leo Mincy was also a member of the Holy Temple Church of the French Harvest of Pennsboro, New Jersey. And whereas Leo Mincy departed this life on Monday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, leaving a host of relatives and friends. And whereas the council desires to recognize members of the community and to offer expressions of sympathy to the friends and family of those who have passed. Now therefore, be it resolved that mayor and council of the Borough of Pennsboro hereby offer their sincere condolences to the family of Leo Mincy. And that is it, ma'am. Yes.
I'm sorry. That's when I knew this, my study was filled. I'm sorry, because it came in.
So that's on this. You didn't say how old he may be after that. Eighty-seven.
And he didn't, he didn't retire nineteen twenty-two.
Nineteen, nineteen, did I say twenty-two? I said ninety-two. I read nineteen ninety-two, I did.
I did.
Thank you. I'm glad I didn't do that at a service. So, so since I, I've read it ahead of time, we have a motion to it up. Thank you, Councilwoman Casey. Can I have a second?
Got it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jerradano, Madam Clerk, and your office.
Soon you won't even need a paper.
Okay, Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Jerradano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Warren.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carpezi. Yes. All of our motion, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm, I'm being blackmailed. I'm, I'm being told that if I don't say what, what this thing that I'm gonna tell you now, you're gonna release the video from Friday. So I'll tell you. Thursday, the night before, we were at the high school. And our officers showed up to support the kids there. It was the hundredth, the hundredth indoctrination of the Students for the National Ashes Society. And I was the keynote speaker for that event. So I was very honored and humbled to be there. It was nice to represent the town on such a wonderful evening. I didn't talk about grades because I didn't. So I skipped scholarship, but we spoke about service, character and leadership. And we welcome them to join us here and help with us rebuild the community.
Thank you, Bob. To let the guys know that we really appreciate them getting involved with the community. That, that stuff means a lot. It means a lot and it, and it goes a long way.
If my, if my, if I can add to that, I had a, a person come into my shop and tell me that's the first time that he had ever seen you and he said that very, very good job of what you did. He said, very well sp- spoken, very well put together and very impressed with you.
I don't mind the video getting dropped now.
It's only on the county website.
Great to hear. I'm, I wanna, I wanna, I forgot to mention something. This Saturday at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, I wanna encourage everyone, if you have an ornament and you wanna hang it on the tree in memory of your loved one, I wanna encourage everyone to please do that. This Saturday, December eleventh.
Well, the lighting.
The lighting is.
The lighting is the eighth. No, the eleventh, right. The eleventh, the toy drive giveaway is the eighth, right. And just to add to that, if there is, if there are any strong men or women that want to help put the tree up Thurs- this Thursday at the park. We are, you know, looking for help. We have a few people that's gonna help us, but you know, the more, the merrier to try to keep this tree. We have a nice tree, a big tree, a huge tree. So.
Well, tell us how huge it is.
Sixteen foot. So if anybody is free Thursday evening to come help us keep it upright, so it stays upright, you're more than welcome to come and help us out. Yeah, you have to be strong man, woman, child, anybody that's able to help.
I just wanna help us decorate the tree Friday.
I'm not gonna say what it was, but somebody, this administration sent an email out about this. It said some strong men, like Rob's Harvard, John Rambo, John Carter, Richard Barrow, Steve Vlad. I'm like looking like. Yes. I think it's like Greg Martin.
Yeah, and as the mayor said, we'll be decorating the tree Friday. But yeah, if you have any ornaments that you guys wanna make with your families, draw it up, put it together. Doesn't have to be anything special, as long as it's special to you. Bring it out there, put it on the tree, so we can display that. Just something special to you and your family, something to do with you and your family to make the ornament, you and your children or husband, wife, grandparents. Whoever wants to make something, go to your local stores, shop locally, go Dollar General, Family Dollar, get something to make it. You know, make it with glue, clothes hangers, whatever you need to keep it on there. But yeah.
There's videos on Instagram.
Right, go on YouTube, whatever you want to do. All types of different illustrations on how to make different type of ornaments, but we are welcoming the community to make their own personal ornament, ornaments. And can, come hanging on the tree.
And real quick, do you know who dropped those toys off back there?
Santa Claus.
Santa Claus? Yeah, a bunch of toys back there, which came out.
Chisarani, Toppers.
So nice. Did you, you saw him?
Did you leave him?
I stayed up all night and I didn't see him. I tried, I tried so hard.
Alright, moving on.
Probably why you were dancing.
We have some new business. So John Washington submitted a letter to mayor and council rename Railroad Avenue.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you both. I think we discussed this talking about the topic in general and not the specifics of the letter for policy.
How people could submit it. Make nominations, things like that.
So, it's open for discussion now?
Well, let me, let me, let me just suggest that because of street naming. What has been done generally in other municipalities should be done here is that you should have a, number one, you need ordinance which allows you to be able to name streets. And you should have a committee designated to explore those types of requests to determine what it is that would make that request fit into the category of those that would qualify for a street name. Generally, criteria is that it would be a posthumous or after-death naming. So you have several options. You have the option to actually change the street name, or you have the option to provide what's called an alternate street name. That's why you may see on certain streets that there's actually, you know, the street name of, of Main Street and then an additional name of Bobby Jones Way or something like that. Just throwing that name out. But that's kind of how, how you can do it. So I, I can provide you with a for your review, as well as a committee document for you to look at and determine whether or not that's appropriate.
Thank you. And I thought that it would be nice if our name would be.
And in, in the municipalities I've dealt with, they actually, it's, it's pretty much a ceremony that takes place at the council meeting where they read the ordinance and have the family there and celebrate it, because it's a, it's a big deal.
They go on bailings as well on the street, you know, on the corner, wherever this is. They'll build a new name with a sign, take pictures, where it's very festive.
And to be clear, to be clear, the ordinance generally is, can, should be watered than just street names. You may also have monuments that you want, place, monuments and things of that nature. All types of different things like that that you may want. So I'll provide them to council.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the best practice checklist.
Wait, excuse me, so there's no actions tonight?
Yeah.
The next action will be, because no ordinance can be introduced now until January, so the next action will be the ordinance.
Well, well, I'll be providing something for the council, for them to view, to determine now.
Oh, you're right.
Council people or the city?
It's, it's usually.
Let me just, if I can interject, in, in reference to this matter, the family should be notified that kids are okay with having this done before we go in far forward. And nothing to do with the ordinance, but as far as what you're addressing in this matter, they should first have the opportunity to say, yes, I agree or no, I do not.
I'm checking that, make sure I can spell right.
Yeah, because you have people submitting on behalf of third parties.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to speak to the family and see how they feel about it.
Thank you. Alright, best practice checklist.
So the, this, so the best, the best practice checklist, the best practice checklist was kind of already talked about in the finance report. It's just, it's a it's not even a name for it, because this is a checklist that confirms that we're complying with certain things in DCA. Steve worked on this, I worked on it.
Is that, is that the break-in actual plans that?
No, it's something completely different. Let me just, I'll just give you an example of something that says. Has your municipality reviewed all completed capital project bond ordinances for remaining balances that could be canceled by resolution and revert to their respective balance sheet accounts? And the answer is yes. It's just things like that. I doubt you want me to go through all of this entire thing.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's really it. It's basically the challenge to follow on all the rules that you're supposed to follow.
Okay.
And it is a criteria that we have to do to get on transition ready.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the public portion. Anyone from the public, uh, with this to see, just give your name and address and you have three minutes. If you cannot address your concern or answer your question within three minutes, then schedule some time with our business administrator after the meeting to further address your concern.
Greg Martin, forty-six Blue Street. My first comment is I'm a little bit aware of that letter. That letter was posted publicly. As far as the letter for renaming the streets, renaming the street. So it's, it's not like, it's not a secret. But I would hope, and I would hope that council doesn't start renaming streets, although I'm in favor of something like Mr. Torres said, I have seen some streets in Memorial and Memorial of and things like that, but when you start changing names of streets, those names that they're currently are named, mean something to people that grew up on those streets. So I, I would just hope the council considers all of that. You know, I grew up on Franklin Street. I definitely don't wanna move away and come back and the streets name something else because that street name means something to me. Oh, I'm glad that you spent a theme the night we've been talking about the parks and doing some things and beautifying the place. It's, it's nice and dandy that we're talking about doing other things, but I was a little bit appalled this morning. I know we got a tree lighting coming up at the Memorial Park. The way our Memorial Park's been treated is atrocious. I'm not blaming none of you, none of, none of current council, whatever the case may be. Over the years, that park was the nine-one-one, nine eleven memorial was put up. And it's a beautiful, actually statue, for lack of a better word for me. I think the lettering may be coming off. I don't know if that was always if it was black lettering on there initially, or was it just?
It was sand blasted.
Sand, sand blasted in. Maybe could use some cleaning. I, I'm not sure about that. But so this morning, I just happened to be off to work and I knew you got the tree lighting coming up. So I rode past there and seen there was a lot of leaves or whatever. So I said, you know, I'm gonna take the time and try to help the borough out, because I knew you guys had the tree lighting coming up. I contacted the mayor's husband Waverly and me and him went out there and blew the leaves out, cut the Blew the leaves out, cut the grass and just try to make it look. Presentable for putting up the tree. That's besides the point. My point is, if we're going to try to do some other new things, you gotta start taking care of what we currently have. Because to tell you the truth, and look, I mean, grass is growing in walks where people. Uh, I don't, I want to answer Mr. Tarver. I don't know initially how, how it was when about. But some of the bricks have in memorials people. Um, I don't know, did the borough sell those bricks to them? No, I'm asking, Ms. Corpazey may be aware. She's been around for a little bit. So she may be aware.
Trying to think if that was some of, some of the way that they made raise money for the memorial.
Yes.
I guess that's where I'm kind of remember, but I'm, I'm gonna swear anyway.
Some of them were veterans, including my son. He is a veteran. He's still alive, thank God. But I was wanting to have purpose, wanted to.
I, I don't know how we go about it or just suggesting, because a lot of times when I start doing things, my mind starts racing of. How to make some things better. Um, or to make, that park is a gem to me. I, I think it's underutilized, a place you can read your Bible, remember people out there, go out there and sit out there a little bit. But I rarely see anybody out there unless he's sitting on a bench drinking a bottle of water or something, to be honest with you. But it's really a nice little, nice little area. But I would, I don't know if the borough, maybe somebody can look into it. I mentioned something to my wife briefly, because I've been in and out the house all day, but. Um, I would like to borrow maybe. To revisit selling those bricks. To people that wants to memorialize somebody and maybe they go out there and paint the brick that they purchased. And you can use the money for somewhere else, maybe the summer events that you have, or sell the bitches out there. And let the family paint those. Black bitches in memorial of somebody. Um, just to take more pride in that. Little area out. It's a really nice area. It really is a nice little. Nice little place to go sit out. I actually work up in, um. Ardmore sometime, and they got a place. Similar to that. I think I sent the, sent the picture to the mayor one time. I, I, when they was talking about doing Barbara Avenue, I thought maybe. But that might be even a better place to do it where you go out. I knew some, some of you guys ride down Route forty. Going towards Atlantic City sometime. And you know what place sticks out to me the most? Is a little place of Buna with the big statue and I think this might be Catholic or something, but they. It's just a really nice area. Sometimes they got lights shooting up and. That kind, that kind of reminds me of something that we can have there. Yeah, you, you, most people know when they're on their way there, they know exactly what I'm talking about, but. I, I just think I would hope, and if, and if anybody needed volunteers to try to get that stuff, it definitely be wanted, but I think we could sell those bricks. And people probably would be willing to buy them. Not, not, not ask a whole bunch of money, but they probably would be willing to go paint. You know, the little baby might do, somebody found might do one or more or whatever, and then. Then eventually the place is filled up, you know, just, just looks nice, looks nice. That's all of that.
Thank you, and they, and thank you and Wade for doing that today.
Well, this pair of decent, we got a looking. Just fancy painted the benches or so.
Oh, thank you.
The rambo cuts the grass over there.
Oh.
So there, there is a lot of community love and participation.
I don't try to, they're a courteous point.
Forgot to mention, I stopped. I stopped with, because when I rode past there, just so happened. The guy from the leaf thing was driving at the red light. I pulled over and I talked to him because I know him. And I told him what we was about to do and he told me, I don't know if they were scheduled for that street, but he said I would come back. And suck the leaves up for you. And he did come back and suck the leaves up.
The electric, uh, was upgraded this year. The bulbs were replaced on the memorial. So it, it, it's definitely being maintained very well this, this past year. And all the landscaping was redone this summer, as well as the mulch.
Talking about that park, is, is those lights on a timer? Because when I drove here, those lights weren't on yet.
I think there are a timer, but the timer needs to be reset. It's not the right hours.
I see, I see. I did Memorial Market yesterday. I see, I saw one the other day because I drove past, I saw the.
And then we really need to do something. I don't know what, but the flags is out there, it's flying, it's true.
At where?
And just to speak on the, um. What he had first mentioned as far as changing street names, um. I don't feel as though you have to completely change the street name in general at all. Um, like on East Griffin Street next to, uh, Saint Matthews. Uh, or the Word Church nowadays. They have, just like how the signs, they have it going this way saying it's this street. They just got the opposite thing on the top saying. And, and loving memory of such and such. I feel as though we can do the same thing in. This instance, if they choose to do that, not completely get rid of whatever the street's name might be called. Um, but to just put a accent, a sign going the opposite way saying. In loving memory, or they did the same thing. It's they, they made it in loving memory of Bishop Freddie Washington's mother. They didn't change it from East Griffin Street. They just added on, and you know, it's the opposite sign going, it says in, in. Loving memory of Mary Washington, I believe it says. This can be the same thing in that situation. You don't have to give rid of the street name at all. You just basically like, it's like, yeah, like a cross street, so to speak, to where it still has the original name. But it shows who you're trying to symbolize as well. So I think that. Right, or even churchyard. I think that would be the best option to go.
Willis has the bishop's name on that.
Rather than just completely going away with the street name.
Anyone else in the public?
May I ask a question?
Right after, right after this gentleman that's about to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
My name is David McFadden, one sixty-four, Boarden Drive, Cornes Point, New Jersey. Uh, I was at the, uh, Cornes Point. Borough Council just a week ago or so, or at the same point. And I also am the mayor here, hopefully chief forward. I did get a response from, uh, the engineer.
Good, sure.
And I also referenced the videos that I sent. This has to do with, um, flooding on Delaware Avenue. It happened. October twenty-nine, I believe it was. Um, I, I actually was here three years ago. Uh. Uh, to talk about the pumping station, uh, then straight off of Delaware Avenue for the storm. Storm, uh, pumping station, stormwater. Uh, at the time it was, um, short cycling. Every six minutes it would kick on and dump. Water back into the river, but it was actually just cycling the river water. It really wasn't doing any. And so I brought it to the council's attention and, uh, they came out and. I believe fixed it, but, uh, ever since then, I never really heard it run. So for the last three years. I mean, it may have run. I don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing it or hearing it. Uh. But my point is, you know, in the last three years, we've had storms and I don't. Really think it's kicked on, but I don't think, and we haven't had flooding on that, on that street either. Real flooding comes from when the high tide reaches the bulkhead. And there are low spots along the bulkhead in that area. I'm sure. In town, there's probably low spots also where I, I, other areas got flooded, but in particular Delaware Avenue where I. Uh, live, I, I, I'm aware of the low spots and where the water came over. And I know that there's probably flood, uh, remediation and works grants probably. Trying to be written in infrastructure money maybe being hoped for. Uh, but three years ago, I did mention right by the pumping station that, that, that the, it, it was low there and. Uh, a simple fix would have been to just. Have a couple, uh, of contractors dump some fill. Bring that area up a little bit, right where the wall, right where the. Uh, bulkhead dip stand, so all broken up there, but some, some broken concrete and, and fill. Would go that up and that would stop the water from coming over. Not, not totally stormwater, just walking the river at high tides. And it only doesn't happen all that often, only when. Conditions are right. We had the big storm, Chris Sandy came over doing Sandy. And, uh, again, it came over this. This last month. So what I'd like to see is just some kind of, uh, temporary. Uh, action taken, just something until we can get, if you want something better, right? I actually think just filling it with, with whole, would, would solve the problem, but, uh, you know, to have a permanent. Uh, solution, I guess would be to do a whole new bulkhead along these low areas. I don't know, but. If a berm could be placed there, you know, like just a dirt berm, don't let that dirty, so the water can't reach. Over the bulkhead. And that's what I'm looking for. That's why I'm here. I was at, cause, you know, Delaware Avenue crosses into Cornes Point. So, uh, I guess both townships would have to. You know, adjust that.
Did, did, did they give you any suggestions when you went to Cornes Point?
Uh, the mayor said he was going to get back with me and I was going to point out to him the areas that I was talking about. But I also sent him the videos that I had taken. And down by the nursing home down there, um, at Second Avenue, it gets low, and then by the pumping station. Uh, it breached there also, and it's, and actually has breached a, a number of times where it doesn't. It fills the woods, it doesn't make it to Delaware Avenue, but it does fill those woods, uh, with a pumping station at least a foot deep. And, and again, if we can just, uh. Get a couple of triaples to dump their dirt right there, and I believe that would solve. At least temporary, maybe a couple of years we can hold, I don't know.
What you're saying is, is echoing with Mr. I don't think it is, that Lindsay Alhauer. Right, was talking there.
Okay, yeah, I might be just saying.
Same area.
Same area, yes.
And you shared your, you shared your recommendations with our engineer?
I, I sent those videos. I hope you can open. I don't know if you opened.
You did it.
I did, okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, here I am. Um. Yes, sir, I was able to open up your, uh, videos on Saturday. I didn't get a chance to review. Um, a lot of the findings, um, that you came up with, uh, we more or less could occur with. Um, there are several things that we're looking to put into place. First of all, that particular pump station. Um, and Mr. Brown can, uh, talk more to this, but we're looking to. Uh, bring in an independent contractor to take a look at all the pump stations, not necessarily the one on Delaware Avenue. Um, because we have some conflicting data, uh, that we're trying to, uh, uh, figure out. Now, Mr. McFadden, uh, but yes, we do can occur that Delaware Avenue Pump Station, uh, has some issues. Uh, but through, um, a grant, through, um, NJDEP and other sources. That we're looking to, uh, and DCA, excuse me, um, are looking to address those issues. Uh, but the first thing that we're going to do within the next couple of weeks is assess not only Delaware Avenue, but all the pump stations in the, uh, Penns Grove. Um, now, as far as Delaware Avenue is concerned, um, as you, uh, you may or may not know. Um, the other, uh, pump station that we do have, have some sort of detention basin. Uh, associated with those particular pump stations, which, uh, we will address it another time, but Delaware Avenue. Um, I did investigate and spoke to several residents, uh, one longtime resident that owned. Uh, many of the properties that abut that particular pump station just several weeks ago. Uh, with the borough administrator. Uh, we, we did observe a significant amount of flooding within the grassy areas. Now, I have not found, um, any indications as to whether those grassy areas are, are utilized as a. Uh, quote unquote, uh, detention area. Um, I have not been able to find that on any files. Uh, but that's something that we are investigating, because as you know. Um, uh, the pump station, but many of the pump stations within the borough of, uh, Penns Grove, as you may know, sir. Um, uh, have detention basins associated with those particular pump stations, for instance, Mill Street and. Uh, Strong Lane. Um, yes, they, you know, there, there may be some upkeep that associated with those particular pump stations. But sir, I have not found anything on Delaware Avenue that has such detention basin other than. Um, visual observations, uh, after a significant storm event that shows that. Um, directly adjacent to that particular pump station, there is a significant. Amount of, uh, water that's collected in that area that's, uh, attributing to some of the problems that, um, you have identified. Um, having said that, um, additional studies are going to be needed, which we have been, um. Asked by mayor and council to take a look at it, which we are doing. Uh, we have an independent contractor coming in to take specific look. Not only at the functionality of the Delaware Avenue Pump Station, along with any associated. Um. The, 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 the word I would use is detention basin. Uh, not necessarily retention basin at this particular time, uh, for the simple fact from what we observed visually. Uh, that the water was being detained, uh, right behind that pump station, um, to the left. I would believe that would be going south of the Delaware River, a significant amount of water. Um, within that area, I don't believe, just from our visual observations, that that particular area was designed. As a detention basin, but quite frankly, sir, from our observation, it is absolutely being utilized as a detention basin. Um, if that is the case, um, uh, based on the calculations of that particular, uh, land. Uh, that we're talking about or that I'm referring to. Um, may or may not, and I get, I don't have enough information to determine that, may or may not. Uh, have been utilized or is utilized as a retention basin. Um, uh, based on those observations, uh, flooding, as you and others have noted to my office. Has been a significant problem in that area. Um, hopefully by the next council meeting, uh, we would have a assessment. Of not only Delaware Avenue Pump Station, but all the pump stations, store water management pump station we're referring to. Within the borough, uh, by the next meeting. Um, and at this time, sir, at, uh, all I have to offer to you is that. All indications that we've seen from previous reports dating back to July twenty twenty. Um, that the Mill Street Pump Station has been working. Um, excuse me, I'm sorry, sir, the Delaware Avenue, we have a few, my apologies, Delaware Avenue Pump Station that we're referring to. Um, is working, um, or is not working within its parameters. Uh, so that's something that we're going to have to look at independently. Uh, and, and, and report back to mayor and council and the administrative staff at the borough of, of, uh, Penns Grove. Um, uh, for one, and then secondly, if that is the case, we have to determine whether or not. The overflow or the, um. Um, retention basin, if you will, or, or detention basin, because quite frankly, sir, we're not sure. Whether or not that pump station was designed for retention or detention. Uh, I would imagine it would be retention just because it's so close to the Delaware River. So I think we're all on the same page there. Um, I don't believe that particular area that's, uh, paralleling, uh, Delaware Avenue was. Considered. I don't know at this time, sir, so there's something that we need to understand better. Whether or not that particular area that parallels Delaware Avenue was utilized or was designed to be utilized as a detention basin. Um, but from my investigation, or excuse me, my office investigation, I don't believe that's the case. Um, there is no, uh, uh, flow towards Delaware River from that particular detention basin. I spoke to residents that, um, have been longtime residents in that particular area. The owner of the property. Uh, owns several different, uh, properties on that particular block. Um, so that is something that we absolutely have to investigate. Sir, your concerns are warranted. Um, I just don't want to dispel those because I believe there are some issues that need to be investigated, not only, um. Uh, stormwater, but how it impacts our sanitary system along those lines as well. Um, but I can assure you, and I see you shaking your head, I can assure you that those investigations are going to happen within the next couple of weeks. Um, and I would be, I would be better inclined to inform you of those findings at that time. But sir, I did review uh your uh video that you took. Uh, and I and honestly, uh, to mayor and council, I want to uh confirm that we can confirm with a few of those findings from those videos. But uh additional investigations will need to be conducted within the next few weeks uh before Mr. McFadden, we can address uh those issues that we're experiencing here in the borough of Pens Grove, but also how it impacts uh Carney's Point. So at this point, I understand your frustrations. Um, I would ask you for some additional time for us to do those investigations. Once those investigations are completed, we would be happy to share those uh with both mayor and council um and then get back with you on those findings. Uh, but it is at this time, sir, uh, just to uh address your concerns, yes, we know there's an issue. Yes, we've um decided to bring in some independent investigation on those pump stations, not only Delaware Avenue, but all the uh pump stations within the borough alongside, which include Mill Street and Shaw Lane uh and have an independent findings as to the efficiency of those particular pump stations. I hope that answers your questions, sir. I would invite you uh to give you a call within the next uh coming weeks. I know you have my contact information. I would be happy to share with you those findings. And also, as you realize and you've seen this, there is significant problems uh and issues as it relates to bulkheads, as you just had identified uh within the borough of Pens Grove, but sir, there are also those conditions uh that exist not only in Pens Grove, but throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, serving as municipal engineers for several of the uh municipalities within the borough. We all have those problems with these significant storm events that we've been experiencing over the last couple of years.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, could Mr. McFadden contact you offline?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. McFadden has my email address and my um contact information there and council. I will be more than happy to discuss this offline with them. Um, and then come up with some sort of resolution um long term. Uh, mayor, because as you know, and then we've discussed in the past, this is something that's going to be addressed um uh today or tomorrow. It's a long term event based on the conditions that we have in the in the world that we're living in. So yes, I will be more than happy to discuss this with Mr. McFadden in detail um at his convenience.
All right. And and council, Mr. Carpezi has a question for you.
Mr. Smith, could you include in your report to us whether it's possible to do a temporary repair on the damage of the bulkhead right there?
Um, I would absolutely be happy to do that. Uh, councilwoman Carpezi, I would love to have a conversation with you offline about this. Uh, we're, we're talking significant amount of um uh funds to be appropriated for this particular issue. Um, and I know that's not only Carney's point, but I know within the borough of Pens Grove, that's something that we need to discuss in further detail um going forward.
You can email me with your available.
I don't think the pump station were designed to deal with river water, mentioning the bulkhead.
Uh, Mr. McFadden, I'm sorry. I don't need to tell you. We got another person that needs to, okay, be gone away or something. So so um, Mr. Smith will make himself available to you to to further discuss.
Thank you very much. Renee?
Oh, yes. Oh, thank you. Uh, Renee Gambacorda from one eighty-six South Broad. I just had two questions. One of them uh was about eight and ten North Broad Street. Uh, from Mr. Tarver, do you know if the corrective deed has been filed and the deposit refund?
The deposit refund, as I told you, is actually, it was with the CFO. I don't think he got to it because of whatever uh situation was occurring this week. So uh, make sure that gets moved forward. The other situation, uh, as I have explained to council, that is a situation that I have talked to council about in closed session because it impacts some other uh third party agency that's working with that. We hope to have that done relatively soon. As soon as they give me the okay and go ahead, I'll make sure that that gets done. I I know it sounds, I know it sounds a little cryptic, but unfortunately, because there is another third party agency involved uh and I'm not really at liberty to to be able to share that right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, may I just ask one more thing?
Sure.
Do you, do you plan to do any more auctions of the borough properties? I know Mr. Giordano mentioned that um no developers are really showing much interest and um, you know, there aren't any planning meetings coming up, but are you going to sell any more borough properties?
I can give everyone that update.
Go ahead.
Mr. Span and I just talked a few days ago after the housing anxiety committee meeting.
Mr. Span is 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 our new auctioneer.
Either way, Renee.
Oh, okay.
Um, I signed, I sent him an updated uh list of the properties. He just emailed me back today. Um, and we're getting a contract signed, so this is all in progress based off of that. I believe that the auction process will probably start early January with the announcement, which would be a few weeks. That will include a video and a uh information session. And that will probably push the actual auction itself. So around the third, fourth week of January, maybe first week of February for two weeks. And and it will happen like that online. It's an online based system, so you can see, you see the bids as they come in.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee.
Thanks, Renee.
Thank you.
Man, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Justice Carter, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Rambo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Our next council meeting will be held December twenty first at six thirty P M. Have a great evening.